Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, July 15th, 2025. We have the full board present, Town Manager, various members of town departments and the public. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so first on the agenda, we have the approval of meeting minutes from July 1st, 2025.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from July, uh, sorry, yeah, July 1st, 2025.
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Excellent. All right, first public comment. Is anybody here to make a public comment for anything not on the agenda this evening? Okay, we'll close the first public comment. Uh, we have public hearing for approvals. We have a public hearing on speed bumps on Ireland Drive. Arthur, do you want to start this one?
Sure. Um, a while back, I had received a couple of requests from residents around speeding on Ireland Drive and the possibility of putting speed bumps in there. Uh, so I know that the, uh, police chief had some directed patrols out there, as well as we put out the, uh, the big trailer that recorded speed. There was concern that, well, people saw the trailer, so they slowed down. Um, in the meantime, we have gotten some new devices that you can't necessarily see to record speeds. So the, the summary that you guys have in your packet tonight is from the new devices that you can't see. It just looks like something on a tray. Uh, the speed, the average speed is roughly 22.5 miles an hour. There was a max speed of 49 miles an hour. Um, you have the data there. The 85th percentile is 27. The speed on the road is 25. There's a speed limit on the road. Total count over roughly a month were 6,888 vehicles. The average daily count was 247. The peak times were in the morning, 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, and the PM, 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Then it breaks down the actual vehicles. Uh, small vehicles, i.e. motorcycles, roughly 14. Uh, medium vehicles, i.e. Dan's 6,700, and large trucks, uh, large vehicles, 50, uh, 155. Again, the average speed is 22.5. 85% is 27, 50% is 22. The max speed was 49. And on the back of the page that you have, it tells you all of the total violations and/or speeds. I don't know if you want me to read one of these individually.
No, I'm, I see that there. Um, I know Chief Town is here. Do you mind speaking on behalf of this at all, or?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, if you don't mind. Thank you.
If I have any questions on the data, it's pretty straightforward. Um, again, there was some concern between the, first time we put the big radar trailer out there, um, there was concern that because of the, the size of it and the sign displaying that there's speeding, that it would slow them down. And there was a small reduction between that and the device that we use now, which is probably about the size of that soda bottle, maybe a little bigger. It just straps on a telephone pole. Alls it is is data. It's not taking pictures. It's not taking registration numbers. It's just plain data. Um, and the Town Manager just read you that data. It's very similar to the first time. Um, a little bit different, but very minute differences. Um, I completely understand the people's concern. Um, it's not a, it's not a, uh, it's very frequent concern across the town. This happens in neighborhoods specifically. Um, you tend to pay attention to highs and lows in anything that happens. If you're in, in public, normal activity never really piques your interest. But if you see something that's abnormal, you typically, or for the most part, you remember that. It's something that you pay more attention to. Generally, that's what happens with these speed complaints, like the data shows that, yes, you did have a few speeders. I can't deny that. Some of them, on any road in town, I'm going to find data similar to that. Um, the speed's going to change a little bit because of the speed zones. Um, but for the most part, the majority of the vehicles are really close to the actual speed limit. Um, and again, I'm not saying that there aren't people speeding, because there are. Um, I will say I'll caution the people that are requesting the speed bumps. The people, the other community, the other neighborhoods in town that have gotten speed bumps, shortly thereafter, we start hearing about complaints of the noise that they made. The noise that they make is going to make noise on every single vehicle. So the speeding vehicle throws by once, that's the one time. You get that one event and it's gone. The speed bumps are there forever. So you're going to hear, if there were 6,500 cars, you're going to hear 13,000, ba-dum, ba-dum, for the rest of your life. Um, there are options. I don't know what the towns, I don't really know what the board's point of view is, but there are options that they could potentially put temporary ones down and maybe break the cycle of some of these people that think they can scoot through quicker. Um, something that can be removed afterwards. The pavement ones, like I said, they're pretty permanent. Once they're down, you're, you're stuck with that noise. Um, that's in a nutshell. I'm open to any questions. Um, I'll also offer this. I'm willing to put, um, any of you in one of our unmarked cars with the radar system and you can see. Well, what we usually do, we have to do it to get certified. We have to guess the speed. And you'll guess the speed, then you'll see what actually shows up on the radar. And for the majority of the people we do that with, they're always very high. Like, that's doing 45 and they're doing 32. Um, it's just the nature of the beast. You, you tend to focus on highs and lows. If a car goes by your house at two miles an hour, I would. I'd be like, what is he doing? And if a car goes by at 49 miles an hour, I'd say, well, why don't you slow down? Um, but 6,000 vehicles went by that you didn't pay any attention to because they're in the norm. Does that help?
Helps me. Does anybody have any questions for the chief?
I don't.
I did bring copies, hard copies of that data, both for the big sign and the little sign. So anybody here that wants to look at that, I have hard copies. I'm more than happy to give it or leave. Um, other than that, if you do want to hop in a cruiser, we'd be more than happy to have it.
Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this? Now is your, your chance.
A big concern is...
Oh, can I ask you to step up to the, sorry, absolutely. And I just need name and address, too, please.
Hi, my name's, uh, Daniel. Last name's Trimarco.
Excellent.
T-R-I-M-A-R-C-O. Um, myself, my wife and my son Parker, we live at 24 Ireland Drive. We live right at the bottom of the hill. So, you know, maybe, um, we're picking up an echo, you know, or something that's, you know, but there, you know, it just seems often that, you know, that, that there is a, you know, a concern for speed coming through the neighborhood. But, you know, the other concern is the volume, because we weren't really surprised by the, you know, the speed, because we think it happens all the time. But the volume coming through is, is a concern, too. You know, it's a cut through. It's a cut through from the light, from School Street to 236. And, you know, that's a high volume of traffic for, uh, 42 houses in a development. 21 of them are on Ireland Drive. That statistic is picking, you know, half the development's going one way, half's going the other way, not even passing that monitor that was probably there on, you know, undetected. So, you know, the concern is really, you know, volume and, yes, speed as well. So 6,000 is excessive. And that's just my opinion, but, you know, there's other people here, too, that probably live in the neighborhood. So, you know, that's, that's all I got. Thanks.
Chief, did you have a follow-up? Sorry.
I did. Um, I may be off or something else in that respect. Um, that can be posted as local traffic only. It's a little difficult for us to enforce it. I'm not saying it's unenforceable, but we'd need to actually follow these vehicles through, which they see us. Um, not stopping for your residents, just driving from point A to point B. If it's marked, local traffic only, you know, the majority of the people do pay attention and obey that. Um, but there's always, I can tell you, there's always going to be people trying to sneak through that. But it might slow down. It might cut to 6,000 to 4,000. I mean, that doesn't help. I mean, that's an option that the town can take, too.
Mike.
Yes, sir.
One of the things I noticed, I, I drove through today before I came, there are no speed limits in the development. There are no speed limit signs. Um, I, I don't know. Sorry, Chief. I think he's going to get up and down, but that's something I noticed today.
Absolutely. So I'll be, I'll be, again, brutally honest with you. The speed limits are not posted by the Town of Burwick. The speed limits are posted even on those roads by the state of Maine. I will use Dobson Lane as an example. We actually had a sitting board member here that lived on Dobson Lane, and they made requests to me for speed signs. It was four years before the sign was done. And I have documentation of when I submitted the application to when they actually came out with the speed study, which they won't accept ours. They won't enter their own. Um, and I'm willing to do that, too. I mean, that's, that's, that's absolutely fine. But I don't want to leave you with the impression that tomorrow there's going to be a sign up, because by law, I can't post it. The state has to. And they're going to put me on a list, and four years later, we'll get our sign. And that was, that's just one example. I've been here long enough to have done that numerous times. Two years, three years.
That one happened before.
So it's a couple of years at minimum before you'll see the sign.
Actually, Chief, before you sit down, I have a couple of follow-ups. Sorry. So this time, I'll actually catch you. Um, so right now, too, and just the follow-up on volume, I know we're, we're speaking to, when we've been looking at these times, kind of the end of school and, and out of school year. So I don't know if the residents see a pickup during school, if, you know, that, that's something that's a concern when the kids are out there trying to catch a bus or people going through that. I can absolutely see that being a concern, different from the end of June and, and a holiday week. Um, if, let's say, and again, not knowing about anybody else's opinion up here yet, um, we decide tonight, okay, we don't want to do speed bumps as, as a first stop, but maybe we want to do local traffic only. How much of a hindrance would that be for you to, like, reevaluate in the fall if the residents are still saying that, you know, we're still seeing a lot. It's not helping, or what that might look like, you know, fall or winter, if that's a compromise?
We can put that counter out, you know. Um, those are requested all over town. We have only a couple of them, so, um, we can put it back there. It'll be a month or two before I can cycle it back to you, but we can get a better picture and we'll do it again in the fall. If you want to see if, like, maybe the speed bumps, what that reduces, or is that answering your question?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I just, I didn't want to be like, hey, if we decide not to do this, you know, and they're still a reoccurring issue, or they feel like they're still a reoccurring issue, you know?
If we, if we put up the signs that say local traffic only, can we follow up in, like, four to six months to say?
Yeah.
Are we seeing a difference with these signs?
Yeah, absolutely.
And if that's not working?
Yep.
Maybe then we review it again. But, and, you know, schedule it out, you know, four to six months out and just...
I would dare say, like, 99.9% of the people don't know that we're having this discussion right now. So their activity's going to be the same as it is today, as it is tomorrow. Um, so we'll get a better picture of the signage or the speed bumps are actually working. Um, yeah, we can do that with the, the data collection. Absolutely. And the enforcement, again, we're willing to enforce it. It is a little difficult if it's local traffic only. Um, you know, we're dealing with one car out of 6,788, but I guess everyone counts, and it does. Um, so again, I don't like to, I don't like to say the signs are magical fix, the speed bumps are magical fix. The Town of Burwick has been growing for a long time, um, specifically in the last five to 10 years. Uh, traffic patterns are much different from they used to be, and honestly, our road system is still, you know, what it was 30 years ago. It's, it's had improvements, but it's got more traffic. It's all kind of, more traffic on roads that really weren't designed for. I mean, 6,000 cars on that road is kind of staggering to anybody. Yeah?
So, one more follow-up question. So if you put up those signs, most people, I, maybe I'm not even believing this, but for most people, they try to follow the traffic laws.
Correct.
Right? So if we put these signs out, we can also blast it on social media that the signs are being added there for this reason and see if it makes any kind of effect, because there may be people who don't realize.
Sure.
You know, hey, this is local only. It's not a cut through.
Yep.
You know?
When we, when...
I, I don't know that it would have effect, but it, it would be something that wouldn't cause...
Well, I'll concentrate patrol during, when we put those signs out, we'll be there to make sure that they understand that those signs mean what they say.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Any other questions for the chief and the board?
I don't. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else from the general public wish to? Yeah, absolutely. Feel free.
Good evening. My name's Steve Holton. Uh, I live at 3 Ireland Drive with my wife and my neighbors. Um, we've been here two years. We just moved to the area. I love it and love Ireland Drive. My question, I guess, or comment would be just this, and that is if there are 6,000 something vehicles going through and there's something you can do to reduce the number of vehicles that go through, um, it decreases the chance of something bad happening. And, uh, I wonder what the conversation would be, um, if something bad did happen, because we live at 3 Ireland Drive and across the street from us, there's four young kids. I'm talking this big. To my immediate left, there's three young kids, this big and smaller. And up over the hill, there's a few more. And my wife and I worry just for them. And so, um, I've listened to your, to your thoughts and your potential solutions, and I appreciate the problem that you're facing. But I, but I do have serious concerns that if we don't make an attempt to do something, um, proactively, that someone could get hurt. And then the next meeting of this group or others might be, you know, have a different flavor. God forbid that it should ever happen. But, um, I appreciate the efforts you're trying to do. Um, I'd like to see you put an electric gate in front of it. That's probably not going to happen. I don't mind taking the... And I do want to thank the officers, um, because their presence there has been a, made a difference. And it's nice to see them there. Um, anytime you see a police officer, you know, in Ireland Drive, but anyway, thank you for considering and, and your thoughts on...
Absolutely.
Uh, Paul, what was one more question?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I stated earlier that traffic complaints are really probably the number one complaint that we take. It's, it's very, very common. Um, it's a small agency. This isn't, I'm not asking for anything and I'm not complaining. I'm just, like, if I'm on Ireland Drive, I just, this afternoon, came in after I left, came back in to get stuff for this meeting, and in my box is a petition that you're going to see from Riddlin Road for speeding. Now, Riddlin Road is dead end, and they're complaining as well. So, I mean, I can put somebody, which we do. I actually have a list of, of roads where the guys come in. There's a complaint list on the board, very visual. That's where they'd go if they had spare time. That being said, with one or two officers on at a time, if the phone rings and it's a significant call, I've lost that person as far as patrols concerned, they're actually working a criminal case until that's finished. That can happen to both officers. There may be tons of, I just don't have people to put on those roads. So it just, please keep in mind that there's only a couple of us, and when we're there, it means that somebody on the other side of town is complaining that we're not on their road. And it's a little frustrating for us, because we'd like to help, but it's like putting your finger in a dam that's getting rid of us. We're just doing this all the time. Um, so just keep that in mind. We're trying to do what we can. I'm tired. Should we go sit down?
Absolutely. I appreciate it. Um, anybody else with any comments, questions, concerns for the chief? Anybody else from the board for the chief? Anybody want to make a motion one way or another?
I'll make a motion that we put up, uh, at least start with the local traffic only. I, I don't really get just for the cost of, at less than the posted speed limit, but local traffic only sign, and then follow up to see whether or not that has any effect. And then also ask that we get it, you know, posted out there and blast, letting people know that it's being posted as local traffic only.
Second.
Arthur's. I have a motion and a second.
Just, just a clarification. Can we say signs? Because I'm assuming we want to pull one on each end of our...
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, signs.
Signs, plural.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I might have a little bit. I, yes, I, I think that's the first step, is getting something out there and without trying to, again, we, we look at cost of, of speed tables and, and speed bumps. And I know we've gone through this with other roads in town and, and to the chief's, to the chief's point, once we kind of do it. And I remember, I remembered Dobson. I remember doing the temporary. And then we had to move the temporary ones out because that was too much of a burden for, for the, for the residents and for the people on the road. Um, I think this is a, I think this would be a good start, but I am concerned with just the follow-up. And again, I think the school, the timing, I, I think we would see a different traffic flow of people trying to get around a school bus coming down School Street or...
That's why I want to do the follow-up in the fall.
I think the follow-up would be very important.
When schools in place. Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to start with local traffic only signs, um, posted on social media and then follow up in the fall. Any other comments, concerns? All those in favor? Just there. All those, nobody opposed. So, okay, so we'll start there. Arthur, when can, do you think we would be able to have signs up or signage made up?
Jody, how?
I was going to say, I almost thought about asking that, too. Jody?
I'll quickly come and get them ordered.
We've got them in, we've got them out in the shelf, uh, big safe, um, I haven't moved them.
Okay.
I'm assuming if we have to order them a little bit longer than that?
So for the residents, we're going to start there. Um, please keep in contact with us, keep in contact with the chief. If you're seeing it improve, not improve, um, anything else, like, please let us know. So if there's something we need to escalate sooner than later, then that's something we can do as well.
Or also, if you see, like, you had the, the one anomaly of the one going 49 miles an hour, um, if it's a habitual person and you can recognize the vehicle, please pass it on to the police and, and let them know, right? Am I okay with that?
I'm telling all of our secrets. We have, we have been looking at, uh, pretty people out there at that hour.
Yeah.
Trying to find these vehicles, so.
Yeah. But there's nothing wrong with, you know, we're seeing the same, the same pickup truck, the same Subaru or whatever. Let someone know so they can be looking for it.
All right, moving on. We have no reports of committees. We are going to skip department reports for a minute. We are going to go to appointments, presentations and other guests. And we are going to go to appointment to the planning board, Jillian Richards. Is Jillian right in front?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. So as I recall, not too long ago, you were in front of us for the Board of Appeals, correct?
I was. I got to attend one meeting.
So how did that work out?
So far, so good. Um, just due to scheduling conflicts and stuff like that, so.
Excellent. Um, so what puts you, or what makes you want to sit on the planning board?
Pretty much the same reason for the Board of Appeals. I just, I'm a newer resident. I've been here about three years now. Um, young family. We live over on Hubbard Road. Um, and we just, I personally want to be more involved in the community. I see us being here for a very long time. We have a child, three-year-old, who will be entering the school system soon. Um, and I just want to be more involved.
And so you currently work for a neighboring municipality. Uh, so you have that experience. What experience is that in that municipality?
I'm the town clerk for the town, town of Kittery.
Okay, town clerk. Okay.
Town clerk, yeah.
So you don't work for, like, well, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jillian?
You're aware of the time commitment involved with volunteering?
I do.
All right.
And I, I did think we asked if the Board of Appeals, no real scheduling conflicts that you could see that...
No, I'm literally going to leave Kittery and drive right here for the meeting.
Okay.
Can be done.
Yes.
And the walkthroughs.
I'm sorry?
And the walkthroughs.
Yes.
Fun part.
Yes. All right. Uh, I'll make a motion to recommend Jillian Richards to the planning board.
Second. And just for clarification, it's the term through December 2027?
It's term through December 27.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you for looking at all of this.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we'll go back. Department reports.
Jody.
Yeah.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Start with the transfer station. Uh, the operations of the transfer station are going pretty well. We have plans on paving it and putting some concrete work in there before the snow falls. Now, that's all contractor dependent. The, uh, the crew's working well together down there. Sounds like the secondhand shop is working as well, opening on Tuesdays and some weekends. Public Works, um, some paving projects we have is Old Sanford Road. We did the, uh, Brown Road up to the town line. We already got to finish from, um, Cranberry Meadow to McKenzie. Uh, that was supposed to be done July, I'm sorry, June 30th. Uh, this is also contractor dependent. Um, it's tough relying on all these contractors because their schedule changes a lot as well. Uh, they're telling me by tomorrow at this point. Uh, like, we can only hope for that. Uh, the other one would be full reconstruction of Old Pine Hill North. Uh, that is slated for August 8th. Weather dependent and contractor dependent as well. Uh, and then we're going to also mill in Phil Sullivan Street from Old Pine Hill North down to the Y there and the road where it goes up to Pine Hill. Those are the bigger paving jobs that we got slated for now.
Is Old Pine Hill North, is that the main one, or is that the one that goes by the library?
That's the one over by the library.
Okay.
We did Old Pine Hill South last year. We know this road kind of needed to be done. A little reluctant about doing a lot of roads in town where there is water and sewer because there is so much home building and other construction going on. They cut right into Old Pine Hill South, uh, a year and a half after we, uh, after we paved it. So there's a little, little reluctance there to get some of these in-town roads done. Um, the fleet is in good shape right now, uh, going through a lot of the trucks for, through the summer for the winter. Um, thanks for all the support in the purchasing of the new equipment. Hazardous Waste Day, September 13th, 9-1. Um, it's over on Route 4 by Mix. We have many street and driveway culverts to replace before winter. A lot of requests. The old metal ones are caving in on some of these older roads, so we got some requests and some drainage issues with those that we need to replace. Um, let me see. A lot of street signs are getting stolen. Uh, it happens a lot in the summertime when the kids are out of school. So we got, you know, there's no real fix to that. There's, you can't put a camera out there at certain intersections because you just don't know which one it is. Uh, so we end up replacing a lot of these street signs, whether they're named streets or stop signs or pretty much any kind of sign that the kids want to steal at the time. We got some Beaver dams we're dealing with, one on Old Sanford and one on Riddlin Road. And so this time of year, we got a little overflow in the road. We get a call. Obviously, there's some Beaver dams out there. Uh, Josh is planning on taking a Beaver class, so he may be able to trap them out of there if it's legal, help us out with that. Uh, we will be auctioning off a lot of the old equipment sometime, I don't know, July, August, September, whenever we can find time to fit that in. That's been the norm. Um, and that's about it for Public Works.
When you auction off equipment, sorry, didn't mean to...
No, that's...
Equipment, does it go into like an equipment fund? Is that where the money goes back into?
From my understanding, it goes into the Public Works Equipment Fund where it came from. That's normally where all the equipment stuff for the Public Works came out of.
Okay. I guess sometimes people auction all stuff and it goes back into the general fund, but I like that it's going back into the works.
Yeah, speaking to, yeah, speaking to, um, Lisa, that's kind of where we were.
Okay.
From my understanding. Uh, some work at 11 Sullivan Street, uh, again, all contractor... Some work at eleven Sullivan Street, again, all contractor-dependent. You know, it's really tough to get contractors, trying to get a plumber for a year and a half to get some work there. You come look at the job, they never call us back or they never come back. So there is some plumbing work that needs to be done there. There's some window work that we're gonna be looking at as well. Some painting, if we can also fit that in. And the boiler. We put some money away this year for it. It's a nineteen eighty-five old steam boiler that's been revamped and reconstructed into a hot-water furnace. That's originally nineteen eighty-five. Now, I've tried to look for a pump and a relay switch in there for it, and it's, we can hardly find it. It was making noise last year. So that may be sooner than later. We did get a few quotes on it. I know it fits outside the quote range, but we had to get an idea. So they're roughly around sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars for, for a boiler system in there.
Jody, just to follow up on that, you said we put money away. Last year, do you remember how much we've already put away towards?
Twenty.
Right here, we got, right now, this looks like Town Hall Boiler. It looks like it's about twenty grand right here. But there was some funding that the town manager and I were discussing, going through back some old articles and stuff. I don't think we've nailed it down yet, but I'm sure we can come up with an update, maybe next time.
We have a meeting scheduled in August to nail that down, how much we have left or articles that we can put towards this.
Okay.
That's what I got for updates. Anybody's got any questions or?
Anybody have any questions for Jillian?
I know this is summarily, but since Main Water has taken over, how do you feel like the relationship has gone with them? I know we're gonna be talking to them, you know, a couple of weeks, but...
Dean Water Department? Uh, it's going well, I think. They're, they're right on top of things. I don't hear anything from anybody else on my side. Sometimes I'm connected, I do get some phone calls. Nobody's ever said a bad word to me about them or anything in that, in that way, shape, or form. I still help them out up there a little bit as far as building maintenance stuff on the facility side.
Yeah.
And they got some reconstruction going on, some, some bond money I, I think coming up.
Okay.
I really haven't had a, had a bad word or heard a bad word about them.
I have something. You mentioned new developments. If you've already paved a road, sometimes you have to put the water lines in.
Yeah.
So you'd have to take up the other pavement. What is the process of having to cut that pavement to put the new water? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so, so that's up to the contractor or the person pulling a permit, so we have a permit system. If it's a parallel, it's a five-thousand-dollar deposit. If it's a perpendicular, it's two thousand. So what we've done is there's, there's no moratorium on our roads, I don't believe. I haven't found anything, which means we can say you can't cut in the middle for two or three years, whatever you guys may decide, or the town may decide rather. But we usually take a letter of surety and they do the work. They would come in, they'd cut the pavement, they'd dig down four feet or whatever Main Water suggests as far as below the frost line goes. And then there's a process which we hold most contractors to, but it's a water job, so we're not normally on it as a Public Works Department, but they'll fill it.
Okay, so you guys don't do that then?
No, we don't do it personally as a Public Works.
Oh, okay.
So they pay to repair the road after they cut it?
Yeah, they, they repaired it. Yep, so they usually get John Lampier to do the work.
Yep.
So he'll do the work, and then he'll have a letter of surety for us or the contractor will on whatever address it may be. And then he'll backfill it. Supposed to backfill it with sand, stone, tamp it, and then there's a certain pavement thickness that we require. And then from there, if it doesn't last, I think it's two years on the, on the, on the permit that you pull. We just go and we fix it ourselves and we take some money out of that surety from them.
Okay. Is it inspected after?
You hold it for a couple of years.
Yeah, we hold the money for about two years on the surety letter.
Is it inspected after it's done?
Yeah. It's paved back, it's supposed to blend back into the road.
Who inspects it? After it's done?
We inspect it. We, we'll go through and look at it, yeah.
Okay.
If they call us over and, you know, we're, we're around to take a look at it, but we don't inspect every step of it. That's, that's the thing.
I just noticed on, on the library, that must be Pine Road, Pine Hill North, it's like this.
So that's Old Pine Hill South.
Oh, south, okay.
That's where I was kind of talking about, over there with those two new houses around the hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I've got a call into them guys, so they're gonna have to redo that because that was less than two years ago.
Oh, so that is making it fixed.
Yeah. Those houses went up a year ago, because that's, I live there, so.
Oh, okay.
Not in those houses, but I live on that road, yeah.
Right, so that's kind of what we hold them to now?
So you bring them back within two years?
Yeah, well, we either give them a call and give them a second chance to fix it right, and at that time, we'll certainly make a, make an appointment to be over there and tell them what we're really looking for.
Okay, good.
Usually the first time go around, we, we normally are not there for every step, obviously, short of personnel and highway and, and whatnot, so.
Okay.
I've had two recent conversations with people on, I think it's Lovebrook Drive.
Yeah.
Lovebrook Road or something like that.
Sure.
And they're saying that there's a lot of holes, you know, they have to drive like this, and at one point, we put some ground-up pavement in the holes.
Yeah.
And it lasted for a short time, but had it been rolled? Do we have a roller?
We don't. There's again contractor-dependent. Libby Scott does the grading and the rolling out there. We did that originally when we put the millings down, that's the chunked-up pavement that we get off old roads. That's an unimproved road. It's, it's defined in either the subdivision part of our, our rules. We're not really responsible to hold that to a standard of a paved road. What I, what kind of mean by that is we grade it twice a year. Sometimes we put calcium down to keep the dust down and hold that stuff together. But if you get a rainy season, that's just gonna be the way it's gonna be.
With the big holes?
Yeah, I mean, that's just the potholes. It's not gonna hold together like a, you know, a normal paved road. So, and again, I mean, we spent four thousand dollars, five thousand dollars just to grade it. And myself, I live on a dirt road where I'm from, but I, I know that we get holes and stuff like that, and then just from my perspective, I, I've decided to live on a dirt road, and I've lived, you know, that they come by twice a year to smooth it out. So I mean, I, I'm a little different maybe than everybody else when it comes to that, but that's kind of where we are with Lovebrook.
I just told him that I would mention it, so I just wondered, yeah.
It's because of the designation of the road.
Yeah.
That it's not a, a normal paved road, that's why, no.
Well, one end, they're saying one end we do maintain and the other end we don't, is that true? Or maintain with the grading or?
Yeah, so Lovebrook, twenty-one hundred and ninety-five feet into the bridge is the one that's been reclaimed, we, we put down to reclaim. But from the bridge on out to Blackberry Hill, that's, that's an unimproved road, and we don't have to do anything with that legally.
I have a question. Do we get residents who call and say, hey, I got a lot of potholes on my road, can somebody come and just spot fill in those?
Yeah, we absolutely do a lot of that.
Okay. Somebody asked me that, and I said, you know, I'm really not sure.
Yeah, we gotta get the call.
I told him to call you.
Yeah, we gotta get the call, either Public Works or myself, if I'm in the office where I'm at, and we're pretty good about it. We try to... And again, if you're getting a rain, I mean, if we, we put down a cold patch Monday, Tuesday, and you get a, a good rainstorm by Wednesday, you're gonna have battles again by Thursday.
Yeah, no.
There's just ain't a way around it.
I completely understand that. I just didn't know that he had asked me, and I said, I really don't know what the process is. You might want to call and speak to it.
Yeah.
Okay. Good to know.
Just to put it in perspective, because I know roads in Berwick go back long before Linda and I got on this board, and it was a conversation from the board well before us about, I mean, the town didn't put any money away. They just kind of plugged and played, and if we think we're not spending enough money now, they should have seen it fifteen years ago, and ten years ago, and five years ago.
Sure, so it's been five years, yeah.
How little money was getting put into the roads in town. Just as the follow-up, Linda, how much money are we spending just spot-filling potholes?
Uh, that's, that's, uh, it's, it's, I gotta do, I got a detailed report. I could probably actually get that number from you because we have that. You know, I don't know up-to-date stuff, but kind of like Tim said, the road we have now are certainly not up to standards, so. We have seventy miles of road. We might have ten miles of good road.
No, no, absolutely, and again, I, I know what it was like. I know what it was like ten years, I know what it was like five years ago, and when we started kind of putting money away for it, but I, I don't think the average resident has, has any understanding of how much money we are actually spending to have them even look like they are.
Or how much it costs.
Or how much it costs.
That's, that's a big...
Because just from the five years ago, when we first started, the price per, what is it, per mile has just gone way up to pave.
So if I had an educated guess, probably twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars for a whole season of just pothole filling and filling where we need to do the, the heavy, the heavy stuff.
Thank you. Any other questions for the director?
No, thank you.
Alright, thanks, Jillian.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, we already gave it appointments. Unfinished business, personnel policy revisions. As I recall, this is tabled from last one. Alright.
The board had, had discussion in regards to the take-home vehicle for Jody, which we can get into in a second. But then there was also a discussion around the line that was added. The town manager has the authority to grant exceptions to the policy as long as there is a valid reason for that exception, and there's a question whether that should be there or not should be there, or how it got there, or...
I went through the meeting of that night, and I know how it got there. What happened is we were talking about the couple, okay, like the, like Tuesday by ten on the reimbursement and the mileage. And there are things that you had said that you were gonna put into procedures, and at that time, before that, we had, it was discussed that those type of things you could grant exceptions. But it wasn't a blanket decision to change all policy.
No.
Yes, I, I watched it.
No, no, I'm not saying that. No, it shouldn't be a blanket to...
Well, but when you read that, it, it...
No, I, I agree with you. It shouldn't be blanket to the entire policy manual. It should be in reference to
Those items.
People turning things in and, oh, I had the flu, so I didn't get it in by ten AM. Then he can make an exception and say...
But read it.
Yeah.
Read it.
Okay, it's just where it's placed.
Okay.
Yeah. I see what you're, I see what you're saying now, based on it like this, but I'm saying is, he's not making a, a cost point, you know, can weigh any policy, but things that have like, you know, you have to get this in by ten AM or you're not gonna get your reimbursement. You know, if the person is, is out or whatever.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
The town manager should have the authority to say, yeah, we're gonna...
I agree with you a hundred percent, and, and we're also taking those things out because they're procedures, but if you read this, the town manager has the authority to grant exceptions to the policy as long as there is a valid reason for the exception. It doesn't say what policy.
So she's saying Section one-one shouldn't be there?
Right, you're saying it's all about placement.
That should be part of the loving.
Right.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify.
But on top of that, I think we're taking, I think Arthur had teased saying, pull out into procedure, so he's taking those out. Like, there's nowhere to put it because it, it's not gonna be there any longer.
So eleven, eleven point one, one point two is going to be removed and just moved to, removed?
Procedure. He's making a procedure.
Procedure. I see what you're saying, okay. I mean...
I also, this one here, under four point seven, attendance and lateness, should that be tardiness? Small, the...
No, I, I don't think that's...
Something small.
No, that's a good catch. I agree. Um, alright.
Can I ask a question about meals and lodging reimbursement?
Of course.
When I was looking at that stuff, is there any restriction on the amount that the individual spends? I didn't see anything like a, you know, per diem, either lodging or meals and incidentals per diems based on an area they go.
Yeah.
I guess what it is, is we don't have the full policy in front of us.
Okay.
So what we're having is where the changes were.
No, I, I know, but, but when I looked at the whole policy, I didn't see anything where it...
I thought it was in there.
Where, where it's, and I, I may have missed it, and I, and it's just a question, so I don't, I was just, I was just curious, just, you know, I mean, that way you're not staying at...
Yeah.
Yeah, you have like five hundred dollars on the bill.
Exactly.
Yeah, we usually have a stipend X amount.
Right. Yeah, breakfast is up to fifteen if you're on the East Coast, lunch is this amount, you know.
Exactly.
Max amount.
Alcohol.
Yeah, no, and I, and it was, I was just curious because I didn't, I didn't see it in, in that when I looked the first time, so.
Usually like a federal standard for like areas of the country, because other, some areas...
Right, well, that's what, that's what we do at the yard, is it's based on, you know, if we go... Go to Portland, it's you get X amount a day.
Alright, so I guess the concern is moving Section one-one out.
Or, yeah, just eliminating it.
One point one, or not putting it in, correct? Because that's...
If they're looking at the others. I mean, I, I, I would be open to looking to see if there's any other spot where it can come in, because we don't wanna...
Correct.
A policy manual is supposed to provide guidance, but it's also not supposed to handicap you either.
Right.
You know, so I think we can review the policy, the manual as a whole and look at that, because maybe you can add that to spec, instead of one section that it covers the whole policy manual, insert it where needed.
Right.
Because, I mean, he should have some authority here depending on circumstances.
Exactly, yeah, but not a blank is all I was saying.
Yeah, go ahead, Arthur.
Can I suggest that we go through this, whatever you guys want to do tonight, and then for the second meeting in August, I bring the full policy back with any changes, and then you guys can review it and say, well, we want to add this there, not that there, because then I'll also have to pull out Section eleven-one and eleven-two.
Yeah, that works.
It's difficult to see the changes without having the full policy, but...
And I, I think that's, yeah.
We're trying to save a couple of trees.
Again, I go back to my statement of tablets. Sorry, Patty.
Oh, there's one more we didn't, this one here.
Oh, go ahead.
It's add reimbursement.
By the ten AM, right?
Yeah, on the top. It just wasn't highlighted, but, let's see, I didn't know if you had seen that one.
No, I hadn't, but I...
Goes with the others.
Yep.
Nah, because we talked about that being procedural, not...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Arthur, that's what, I mean, I guess my recommendation would be, you know, take out, hold on, I guess I have to make a motion. I would make a motion to approve taking out eleven-one for mileage and eleven-two for meals and lodging reimbursement. I would not add Section one-one purpose at this time, and I would make the amendment to Section four point seven. I would change attendance and lateness to attendance and tardiness for just attendance.
Attendance in general.
Attendance, I think it'd be five, attendance, and then just make a line about tardiness.
Exactly.
One more. We just talked about removing on Section four point one-three.
Yes, and removing in Section four point one-three, the add reimbursement request must be submitted to Finance Department no later than the following Tuesday by ten AM.
And what were, I didn't, what were we doing on this one? Were we waiting or, I can't remember what we were doing on that one there? Waiting till later or? Yeah. Later.
For now, yes. Yeah, I, I would make those changes for the next time when we review the policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's great.
I guess then did you really need a motion for it? Because we're not actually approving the policy, so yeah, so no, so that's, so it's really not a motion, it's just a suggestion for next time. And then I will make a motion that we review the policy and move it to the second meeting in August.
That's okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, so personnel policy revision goes to the second meeting in August. Lisa could catch with the, wait, this, tardiness. Alright, number eleven, town manager report.
Okay, in your packets, I gave what I developed, and I'll be honest, stealing from different... and I'll be honest, stealing from different towns and adapting it to Berwick because I hate recreating the wheel. Just a selectman board member packet that gives some information. I think it's a good refresher for current board members and it's good information for new board members. Let me know if you have any questions. I conducted the townwide tour with Jeff and Cyrus. I don't wanna speak for them, but I think it went well. We hit every department with Jeff and we hit everything but the transfer station with Cyrus because they weren't open the day that we did our townwide. I've begun reviewing several board policies for consideration that I'll start presenting to you guys in August. It's one of those things that I think that on a yearly basis, there are certain policies that we should look at, review. Even if there's no changes, just re-adopt them as a board because things change frequently.
Refreshers of the year.
And we're running into issues with articles that are antiquated.
Yeah.
That and language that's antiquated. Like some of them I'm finding still say Board of Selectmen as opposed to Select Board and things like that, so. Um, I've begun reviewing and updating some job descriptions as needed. I attended the York County Emergency Management Meeting and reviewed future FEMA and its impact at local level as well as applying AI for emergency management. AI is becoming a huge thing within municipal government or local government, so you're gonna see that a lot as far as trainings and stuff, just because there's so many rules and that are developing as we go, because nobody's really sure.
And the ethics about using it.
Yep.
That's
That's gonna be a follow-up question.
An issue to very much be concerned with.
Exactly.
I attended the first part of a two-part training course on public sector wages and hour compliance. This is put on by the Department of Labor, basically what you can and can't do with how all the employees and salary employees, how to determine what, when, where, and how. Part two is actually tomorrow morning of that. Um, I attended the Berwick Water Treatment Plant Sewer Connection Meeting to discuss possible discharge to the sewer department. That went well. What we're looking at with the upgrade to the water treatment plant is looking for a way to discharge excess water that we can't put back into the system over to the sewer department, but there's certain criteria that they have to meet as far as the amount of aluminum and different chemicals that are in the water. So they're doing that testing, the meeting, James, you were there, I think the meeting went very well. We are in compliance with what the sewer department requires now as far as the permit goes, so it's looking like at some point in the future, we may get a temporary discharge permit to see how things go and make sure that we can stay within the limits that the sewer department requires based on their permit with the state.
Do we know how many tanks the sewer department's still currently using? Cause I, the last time we were there, I think there was one they weren't even using at the time.
Last year it was the same, like.
I do not know that answer. I can find out for you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Sorry, it, it just popped in my head. I would have asked sooner.
And then I will be on vacation as of tomorrow afternoon.
Fun.
I will have, always have my phone available for the board if, if anything urgent comes up, um, as well as the staff. I've met with James, he will be covering for me. If you do need me, just give me some time because I'll be up in Canada for part of it, so I don't know what the reception's gonna be like and getting to a phone and things like that.
Oh, you gotta.
You're, you're on vacation.
Double check you.
I just got a brand-new one. Last time I checked, I don't have any Mr. Meters on me that's gonna keep me out.
Oh, I think.
Half the people have.
I think they.
I am still working with the sewer department to coordinate a joint meeting between the Select Board and the Sewer Board. We're looking at August. Jay was going to meet with the Sewer Board to get some dates from them, so I'm waiting to hear back from Jay.
Okay.
So we haven't set a date?
We have not set a concrete date yet.
I had it as tomorrow. I was gonna ask you about that.
Every time we see them set a dates, one, one thing or another with vacations and stuff happens, so we decided let's, let's wait till August, get through the summer and.
Take it, buck your tongue. Don't move it up that fast. August is not the end of summer. Don't move it up that.
Get through vacations.
Okay.
That's it.
Any questions for the town manager? Arthur, I might have some feedback on the onboarding or just the member packet, like
Yep.
when you come back, but overall, thank you for
Yeah.
trying to put something together that's very general. Um, I think just as a generalization too, if you guys haven't like gotten on MMAs mailing lists yet or all the seminars they put out there, there's a lot of free trainings, like do it. It, there's just a fountain of information that's really, really helpful, so.
Right.
Sign up for September ninth?
You do?
Oh, you did? Okay.
The new elected.
The new elected one you?
Yep, that's it.
Excellent, that's a great one, yep.
Yeah.
There's a lot of information in it. Hey, thank you, Arthur.
You're welcome.
Alright, Select Board Communications. There's a bunch today.
Call me, ask Jamie his name again.
We will start with Xfinity, um, no, not changing her name, but TV update effective August fifteenth. Warner Brothers Discovery will discontinue its HBO Family, Movie Max, Outer Max, and Thriller Max linear TV channels, so. HBO Family programming will remain available on demand if you are with any of those, is it? I have a couple of things to read into the record. The first one is from Maine Rock and Recycling, at one twenty-eight Greenview Drive in Rollinsford, New Hampshire. Uh, this is dated July seventh, twenty twenty-five. We have, here Town of Berwick Select Board, it has come to our attention that you're inquiring about our blasting process and how our team safely executes each blast. We appreciate your interest and would like to take this opportunity to outline our procedures and measures we take to ensure the safety of the community and our work environment. Our process begins with our trusted contractor, Capital Rock, entering the quarry to start the drilling phase. They carefully drill holes in a designated pre-planned location. Once drilling is complete, a powder truck is brought in to load each hole with necessary blasting powder. After preparation, we work closely with Capital Rock to schedule the blast. Once the date and time are confirmed, we promptly notify Berwick Fire Department and Police Department to ensure all appropriate parties are aware that safety measures are in place. This coordination helps us guarantee that both the public and our team remain safe and fully informed throughout the process. If you have any further questions or like additional details, we are more than happy to provide them. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Maine Rock and Recycle. So assuming someone has inquired about their practices?
I did, but not necessarily as a Select Board member. I live on Old Sanford Road.
Got you, okay.
Um, every now and then the mobile home will shake. So we're like, what is that? And have no notice. I, I, somewhere along the line, I was under the impression that, and that was probably from being in cities and stuff, that they have to make some kind of a notice or something, a noise or something, a whistle or something along those lines.
Before they actually fire the block, right?
Yeah, so, and it's nothing like that, but.
Um, that is something we can fire, file, follow up with the Chief of Fire. We'll just ask Dennis and just see if there's something out there, so that you are aware.
Once they get notified by Maine Rock, maybe they can post it on the Berwick page.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, every time that, something like that happens, you'll see all kinds of people on Facebook and stuff that, what?
What was that? Exactly.
And when the earthquake came through the spring, we knew.
I just assume it's the cannon at the end and not seeing it going up and. Sorry. I have one more and this is what Chief Town alluded to. So we, the people of the Lebanon side of Ridland Road, are very frustrated with the speeding of trucks, cars, dirt bikes, and ATVs on our road. They are going double the speed limit or more. It's a matter of time before somebody is injured or, or death. With the lack of police force in the area on patrol, which we don't understand at all, it's been like this for a long time. We feel that some arrests need to take place to slow people down, then maybe the word will get out, slow down on Ridland Road. And it is signed by the residents of Ridland Road. So please, slow down on Ridland Road, and as the chief has already spoken about, we should be seeing a greater police presence up there too and tracking. Alright. Approval of accounts payable and warrants. Getting in order?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, we have accounts payable warrant number one thirty-one in the amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred twenty dollars and thirty-four cents, dated seven-ten twenty twenty-five. Sorry. We have accounts payable warrant number one-three-two dated seven-fifteen twenty twenty-five, in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. We have accounts payable warrant number one-three-three dated seven-fifteen twenty twenty-five, in the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred one dollars and seventy-one cents. We have payroll warrant number four dated seven-eight twenty twenty-five, in the amount of one hundred thirty-two thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy cents. We have payroll warrant number five dated seven-ten twenty twenty-five, in the amount of one thousand seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. Payroll warrant number six dated seven-fifteen twenty twenty-five, in the amount of two hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Accounts payable warrant number seven dated seven-fifteen twenty twenty-five, in the amount of fifty-nine thousand three hundred one dollars and eleven cents. And then payroll warrant number eight dated seven-seventeen twenty twenty-five, in the amount of one hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars and sixty cents. And make a motion that we pay our bills.
One second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those paid. Alright. Alright, so new business, finalization of water bond. I have a lot of information on this paperwork. So this is an old bond that was approved on article thirty of the June twenty-twenty election. June twenty-twenty-one election, I apologize, June eighth, twenty twenty-one. So it is for one million two hundred thousand dollar loan from DHHS as I guess what is going on is they are revising how it is being carried over and we need the town approval for the town clerk and the board to authorize the payment for it. Is that correct?
We need to prove to, we're gonna convert it into a conventional type bond. Um, the analogy that was given to me, which is actually a good one, it's like if you were building a house, you're going from a construction loan to a, to a mortgage. And the board needs to authorize the chairman to sign the paperwork. There's only, that's the only signature that's on there is for the chair to do it, and then the town clerk will also sign it and we will send it back to the bank, uh, to the lawyers.
There's no change to like the percentage or
No.
nothing like that? Okay.
No, I can review that.
I believe we spent everything but about two hundred, maybe two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the, of the one point two million already.
Yeah, James, do you mind just stepping up, because I think you know the answer to that, right?
So. Yeah, there's still a couple hundred thousand dollars left. By going to the permanent financing, we still have access to that money.
Okay.
And we also still have two point eight million dollars from the grant.
Okay.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion then that we allow the chair to sign the appropriate paperwork as requested.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Excellent.
I think those are all interesting.
Looking signing away.
We're going after your house.
Alright. Bid award, town hall electrical upgrades, street side service drop and panel boxes. Perfect.
Thank you, Richard.
This is a case that, as Jody was saying, we had this out to bid and this is the only company we got in to bid on it and they came in the last day that it was due to bid on it.
No one did. He came in before the
Wow.
due date. Yeah.
Maybe the day before, but it was, it was towards the end of the due date that we got it.
Yeah, July seventh. Um, do you need a motion to approve the?
Another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know in, in the bid, it says it excludes all the concrete cutting and patching, patching interior, exterior walls, et cetera, core drilling, trench backfilling for gas, propane, piping. Is that all stuff that still needs to get done?
Yeah, it was done with the generators were installed last year, actually, so a lot of this, a lot of this work was originally thirty-five, forty grand.
Okay.
We got the generators and made it enough jewelry to inside of it.
Okay, so none of that stuff, stuff we're gonna be
Deadish.
seeing later. Okay. Thank you.
I will make
Ten thousand?
Yeah, ten thousand, ten forty-seven.
Yep.
I will make a motion to award the bid to Town Hall Electric, uh, sorry, to Yankee Electric for the Town Hall Electrical Upgrades in the amount of ten thousand, or not to exceed the amount of ten thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars.
My second motion?
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Alright, tip funding request. Yes, go ahead, James. I was looking for Arthur, sorry. Go ahead, James.
Good evening, James Blissman, Director of Planning Development. So this tip request, I have three funding requests in this one request. The first one, I'm requesting up to two thousand dollars to fund a concrete pad for a bus shelter. The proposed location is where the bench is now across the street that the Legion one has donated for. The, the shelter we donated by Coast. The only cost we're responsible for is the pad, installation of the concrete pad.
Is this a, this is almost a three and a half sided shelter? Enclosed shelter?
It is in, I, it is enclosed, yeah. Yes.
And, oh, I'm sorry. So they're specifically donating this one? We didn't get an option?
I think they had one left over. I think they had a few in storage, two in storage. Yeah.
Okay. I just, uh, I've seen in the past that, you know, once that, that enclosure, it becomes shelter.
Okay.
Not bus shelters, but other shelters. Where I've seen a lot more people where they're just putting the top on to protect you from raining, but not necessarily an enclosed. But if, if they're donating it for free, um, I just.
I guess the follow-up would just be checking with the chief that he's okay with it being. I, I understand where you're going with that.
How can we get around that?
Well.
Police presence.
Sure.
This, I, I can tell you Coast only had two shelters available. They were both with the same thing. Given the use of this bus stop, I don't see it becoming a quote-unquote shelter. And also the fact that it's directly across the street from the municipal office, I can literally sit there and walk at it out by window. I don't see that. If we see that becoming a problem, then we will work with the Police Department and Great Falls, because they gave us the okay to put a part of it on their property. So we'll work with both Great Falls and the Police Department to no trespass it if that becomes a problem.
Okay. I just, I've seen it a lot, because I've seen it for, they've had that exact issue and they took them out. But yeah, you're right, it's right downtown.
Is this going anywhere near where there's a new building going over there or anything like that? Is it gonna be?
No, it's going directly across the street where the Legion donated the bench, which will stay there.
Yeah.
So where the bench is, at the end of the building where the dominos and stuff is, just before the construction trailer, Great Falls Construction Trailer, there's a bench there. That's where it'll be going.
And what, going around the bench?
Yeah, the bench will fit inside of the building. Inside of the shelter, so that way there's a, we don't lose the Legion's donated bench.
And it's not gonna interfere with the sidewalk? Behind the sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be, it'd pretty much be back, back of the sidewalk.
And there's, is there any new fut, future buildings that are going right behind that?
No.
Does this look like there's a little bench inside of it?
There is a little bench, but I've talked with them and they know that we have to keep the Legion bench in there.
It doesn't come with a bench.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It looks like it does, but we're gonna keep the Legion bench in there.
Yeah, we coordinated the loc, the location to make sure it's in the right spot with Great Falls Construction.
I mean, how many, how many people use that stop, do you know?
I'm gonna say, just based on my observations of looking out there throughout the course of the day, I bet you there's probably a couple dozen people, maybe more.
I used to use it when I, I'd ride my bike to work in Dover, just, and I'd take the bike onto the bus and go from there. And it was pretty well used at that point in time.
Yeah, once a year, the Coast comes in and gives us a report of the usage in Dover. And it's, I know the first time we saw it, I was surprised the number of people that use it.
James, do you need an individual motion on each one?
Yeah, I think so.
Who's gonna install the concrete pad?
We.
Is that gonna be contracted out?
Contracted out, yeah.
Does Legion mind that their bench has gone inside?
I can, I haven't asked, but I.
I, I've had conversations with the ladies auxiliary and they're okay with it, but we can follow up and make sure that. I've had conversations with the ladies auxiliary and they're okay with it, but we can follow up and make sure that they continue to be okay with it.
Okay. And it's what, two thousand dollars?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we allot up to two thousand dollars in TIF funds to install the concrete pad for the bus shelter pending agreement from the Legion.
A second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
The second request I have, the workers at Great Falls hit the sign and accidentally broke it. So what we did is we took the opportunity to redesign the sign to, we've updated, we've kind of learned and updated the design over time. Also, the sign's now a double sided message board sign. So now if you're coming down Route Nine, you can see a message as long as across the bridge. It's also a little bigger too, to make the messaging more visible. Actually, Great, I put the one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollar credit, it's actually, Great Falls paid it directly. Just wanted to correct that in my memo. So today my request is six thousand thirty five dollars and one cent from TIF to construct the new welcome sign.
I will make a motion to grant the request to use six thousand thirty five dollars and one cent from the TIF fund to construct the new welcome sign downtown.
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
And the last request I have is for two hundred and fifty dollars to reimburse, sorry, that type of, Lisa Eustace for flower plantings. So Lisa and Drew, they volunteered a lot of their time to maintain flowers, the monuments, the two water troughs. So this is just to reimburse them for the cost of the flowers.
Yeah, and for the board too. This is something that we've been doing, again, before Linda and I even sat on the board, so this is something anyway that they've done a great job maintaining that. I'm sure it's even, honestly, probably even more than what they're asking for to reimburse them, so. Yes, I will make a motion to, for up to two hundred and fifty dollars from TIF to reimburse Lisa Eustace for the flower plantings.
I'll second that motion.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
James, are you also now might bring your lawn chairs to solve this square update?
Okay.
Look, I looked this up.
So lawn chairs update, Holly, who is the new chair of Mission Borough, would have been here. She's at a concert, she had planned with her family. So Holly's been doing an amazing job. She took the baton from Jeremy and it's been pretty seamless. Holly's been working really hard to get sponsorships, which we did raise fourteen thousand dollars this year for sponsorships. So a little less than, I think, what we all would have hoped. I think some of the economic conditions have made it a little bit tougher, but I think Holly's did a really great job reaching out. We've got emails flying back and forth and all kinds of things we're creating. I think lawn chairs this year will have a similar feel to last year. We're keeping the same detour plan and general pattern. We're, we're adding different things every year. This year we're adding a hot air balloon, a tethered hot air balloon.
Where's that gonna be?
It'll be on the green space at the edge. Great Falls has agreed to allow us to use that space. It's all insured.
Was there any reconsideration for all the ones that you had on this street? Because they were all the, the library and all those and we noticed that they didn't get a lot of track, people just didn't realize they were there.
Yeah, so there's definitely, there's definitely a consideration for placement. We're looking at mixing up the food vendors this year, so, so there's food intermixed with the community.
On both sides.
And the lines won't interject with each other and all food in one spot.
The other thing too, we're looking at, we tried staying away from food trucks with generators. This year we're actually gonna have them on the back part of Eleanor Street. So the, the sound of the generator won't, will kind of be isolated there. So we'll actually have a little bit of a food truck park there. We're gonna have like a ski pitch and a high striker and a dunk tank, hopefully with the rec department. So that'll be there along Broadchester Street.
Who's gonna be in the dunk tank?
I will be.
You?
I volunteered.
Can we get free balls?
Last time I was in a dunk tank, one of the contractors paid the baseball team to come throw at me when I was a building inspector in town.
Hopefully it's a warm day.
So this is actually the seventh lawn chairs event we've done, which is incredible to think about. This is our fifth year. Again, we'll have bands, tap dancers, a bull ride, student performers, beer garden, corner point, baker's market, food vendors. We're gonna have a barrel train, so the tractor and like the kids can go by on the trains with the train going. So the balloon and the train are the big two things we're adding, but, and then keeping a lot of the things that we had last year.
The stage and everything, same spot?
Yeah, stage will be, and then like, we are mixing up where some of the food, those were built.
Yeah, I do like using the building as a buffer of the sound of the generators. I think that'll help a lot. As always, because it's been a rainy season contingency plan, if it rains during lawn chair.
I know. Well, the biggest thing for us is actually having an actual stage and then that helps us, that helps us with a little bit resilience with rain. The one time we had to actually pull people into the auditorium was when it was thundering and lightning out. One good thing now with all the businesses being open and we're encouraging businesses at the edge to have open houses. So that'll help too, you know, if we have a major weather event, people can go to Corner Point, people can go to Club Seventy Two. And we have the auditorium as a place. If it's something where we see a storm passing by, just to bias, because that one year we had to do it, we were in the auditorium for about an hour and then we were able to
Yeah, clean it all.
Finish the event.
But what if you get thunder and lightning? What are you gonna do with a hot air balloon?
Get out of it.
Create electricity?
Yeah.
If you're up there.
They're, they're pretty, yeah, they're, they're not gonna inflate it.
Oh.
If it, if the weather conditions are like safe.
Oh, got it. Okay.
That makes sense. You can just see the basket.
Okay. It sounds, it sounds fun, it sounds, I mean, every year that I've done, it's been great.
Yeah, it's been amazing. James, you want to mind the people at home, the times and date?
Absolutely. So actually August third is our rain date. So that, that's Sunday. The date for the event is August second from four P M. to eight P M. And any friends interested in volunteering or being a part of it, you can visit lawnchairsborough.com or shoot me an email.
Any questions for James Hill Lawn Chairs? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
For anybody at home, if you want to dunk the town manager, please come out. He'll be sitting in the dunk tank.
All day?
All, all day. Thank you, James. County tax assessors return.
He's been sitting here patiently waiting.
Nope, 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 not there.
Oh, he's not yet?
So we have...
What is your county line?
Nope, nope, this is our county. So for York County budget for fiscal year twenty six, that runs July first, twenty twenty five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. It is found that our proportion is four hundred ninety four thousand seven hundred one dollars and forty four cents to be paid by the first day of September twenty twenty five. I will make a motion that we pay four hundred ninety four thousand seven hundred one cents, seven hundred one dollars and forty four cents as our part of...
Second.
Any discussion? It's nothing that we cannot pay, so all those in favor?
One abstaining.
And one abstaining, that's right. So four zero, one abstaining.
Linda's not paying, alright.
I pay, everybody.
Alright, Lena Clark Fund. Arthur, what's going on at the Lena Clark Fund?
At the last meeting, there was some discussion regards to the Lena Clark Fund, the purpose of it, the intent of it, the interest. So Lisa did a lot of research and she sent you guys an email with where we're at as far as the, the fund goes and the interest. We come to find out that every year that we don't spend the interest, it should be reinvested into the fund and then you get the interest for the following year. So Lisa went through and zeroed out the, if we had spent the money over the past years that it wasn't reinvested, to make sure that we weren't in violation. And we're not. If you, if you go through and zero out and had reinvested what she had said, what was left over in December based on the will, we would still have eight thousand nine hundred seventy four dollars and fifteen cents of interest that we have the ability to spend. We will start doing the reinvestment going forward. I had sent you guys an email earlier today just explaining the whole situation and how it came about. You guys had already authorized, I wanna say up to seven thousand dollars to come out for the handicap door, so we're, we're fine as far as that authorization goes. We have the money in there to do it. This will be one of those warrant articles potentially that we have on. We're finding a lot of warrant articles that we need to add on a yearly basis.
If I'm right, the warrant article to spend the interest is always on there. Is it the verbiage that it goes back into, that the rest of it?
Yes, the way...
Goes back in, has to be cleaned up, is that what?
Correct. From what I understand, it used to be in there, then at one point the attorney said on all the warrant articles that you shouldn't have explanations in there because it could be perceived as potentially influencing voters. So explanation on all that was attached to the actual warrant article was pulled off of the actual warrant.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Explain what, why you saw that change from?
If we had to explain something, we needed to make it part of the article instead of a note after the article.
Okay. And so then that got pulled off and because of that?
It got lost.
The interest. So essentially we owe the base of the Lena Clark Fund money from the interest.
Yes, yes.
Right?
And what she, what Lisa did today is based on, since we hadn't done the development or the redepositing she went through each year and say, okay, December, if we redeposit, let's zero out. So then the following year, let's zero out. And by doing that, we've come up with the conclusion that we have eight thousand nine hundred seventy four dollars and fifteen cents that can be used for improvements to this building.
So, okay. Originally, the Lena Clark Fund, I believe, in the will from what I read, was that we were, the money was to build a town hall. Which we did in nineteen, am I wrong? Nineteen thirty nine?
Thirty eight.
Thirty eight.
Thank you, Sarah.
And then we reinvested the money into a fund. And we don't have that here.
Don't have?
We don't have a copy of that. When we, when it was reinvested, the fund, we, we don't have the paperwork. All we have is the will.
Okay, I can get that for you. What exactly are you looking for so I can make sure I get you the right thing?
Looking for, after the town hall was built, I don't know how much money it was to build the town hall. I think I did in my notes at home, but there was a certain amount left and that money was reinvested and there is paperwork somewhere.
Okay, so you want to know what the initial reinvestment was after the town hall was built?
There has to be a fund. There's a
The base.
The base fund.
Right.
It says the stipulations of it.
That's, okay, so that's what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I'm not sure how it happened, really.
Oh, it's really easy. We just, we just left it as interest.
Right.
So the town has been looking at that interest, but what happens is any undes-
Supposed to go back in.
Undesignated or unspent interest from that fiscal year that we, we have that allocation is supposed to go back to the base.
And it didn't.
And it did not.
Okay.
So essentially we have money set aside as our interest from the Lena Clark Fund, but we have too much money set aside, so we have to put it back to
Exactly.
The base of it.
Okay, good.
Correct. Yeah, so I will make a motion to approve, let me just hear this correctly. Moving the principal from five hundred eighty seven thousand seven hundred sixty nine dollars and fourteen cents with sixty thousand two hundred ninety four dollars and twenty one cents in accumulated interest to the adjustment of the new principal of being six hundred thirty nine thousand eighty nine dollars and twenty cents with the interest remaining of eight thousand nine hundred seventy four dollars and fifteen cents.
I'll second that motion.
And then is that correct what we need to talk about?
That is correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Excellent.
Thank you.
Before we go on, can we go back, I apologize because I forgot my notes on my desk.
I did too.
But wasn't there something that we needed to vote on in regards to an overture for the equipment at the transfer station that we needed to?
Do you want to do that under other business?
We'll put it in other business on agenda.
And I can explain that whole scenario.
I just recall remember there was supposed to be a vote to move.
Potentially. I mean, but I can explain that whole scenario when we get to that.
Other business, okay. Alright, yep, that's fine.
I don't know if all the debits are in yet.
Okay.
We're gonna vote on the bottom line number. I don't think they're open.
Okay, we can, and we can-
We can just not and...
I remember, and I'm just thinking, I'm like, oh, we never, we never brought that up.
Quick clean deeds, we don't have any abatements and supplements. Chris?
Thank you for your patience.
Thanks.
One time Chris shows up, it's a longer meeting.
Yes, I generally join by Zoom. I'm Chris Line. He is one of the assessor agents along with Paul McKenny for the town. And as far as the abatement process, for some of you might not be familiar with it, one hundred eighty five days after a commitment, the landowners can contest what their assessed values are and then we make a ruling on them at that time. Because what we do basically is mass appraisal, which is taking a very large data set, you know, assigning values that way. So it's not the same as a bank appraisal when somebody looks at your house in particular. But this process, you know, when somebody does contest their assessment, you know, with mass appraisal, there are high and low numbers and somehow the people low numbers fail to come in about it, but but somebody thinks they're too, too high, they, sometimes they do have a case, sometimes they do not. You know, we go out, look at it, do an inspection generally and then make a recommendation based on that. So that is the output of this process and this is for one Wingate Lane number eight for Alyssa and Samuel Gardner. Map lot U zero zero seven forty five dash eight. Their current assessment was four thirty six, four hundred. It's a oh one built condo, built in twenty, or bought in twenty one for three thousand five hundred, three hundred five thousand dollars. And based on the interior inspections and sales of other units within the development, we recommend to lower that assessment by thirty one thousand four hundred dollars to four hundred and five thousand. And this results in an abatement amount of three hundred ninety one dollars and fifty six cents.
And that's what twenty twenty four taxes?
Yes. And going forward, that value will hold for the property as well.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the abatements to map lot U zero zero seven four five eight in the amount of three hundred ninety one dollars and fifty six cents.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Excellent.
I just did, I did have a question.
Yeah.
Chris, it says the property is a two thousand one built condo. I know the scene's probably small, but is it that old?
Yeah, I think I'm pretty sure all those were built in oh one. I don't have the rule in front of you right now, but
Okay.
Oh, actually I do have this, data sheet is here. And I don't know where it is on computer, but it's here somewhere.
Was it built or bought?
It might have been bought in 2000, I see that 2000.
It was bought in '21.
I see it's 2000.
Built in '01, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I wondered, they built in '01, because I actually owned one there, so.
Looks like built in '01.
And I bought it right now and it wasn't '01, so.
Oh, actually, you're built 2006.
There we go.
Okay. Sorry about that.
It's okay, it was just. Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Chris.
Okay. Nice to meet you, board members.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Second public comment. Anybody here for a public comment? Everybody's left?
I think so.
I want to skip executive session for a second. Other business non-agenda items. I just have a couple things to go over. One, we just have a request with emails kinda coming left and right, what I would like to see, Arthur and Patty, this is kind of towards you guys and tell me if it works or not, but, and the rest of the board. But I really think having the agenda finalized on Thursday, like whatever's there, just leave that for the next meeting. And if anything starts rolling in after, it's just gotta be the next two weeks out. Because I think we're starting to get a lot of stuff for like, oh, this meeting or this meeting will try to cut it in. And then we're starting to see just, you know, questions coming up because we don't have it. We're trying to piece it together and I'm sure Patty's always trying to like then scramble to put it in the packet and, or maybe not. But, I mean, or you're trying to get information for us on a short notice, especially with the town hall being closed and you guys taking Fridays off. I think that would be at least helpful for us.
Right, there's a cutoff, we have a cutoff. You either get it by the deadline or.
It goes to the next.
It goes to the next meeting.
Okay.
I mean, there's exceptions if there's like an emergency, but for general stuff coming in like this, you either make the deadline or you don't, or you just move it to the next.
The other one I had is more for the board. Previously, we look back two chairs ago, Tom used to be in town once a week, meeting with the town manager, going over, you know, kind of the general ins and outs of the department, what's coming up on the agenda, so that like, if we had questions, I can say it was very helpful for me my first year, like if I had a question for the town management report, Tom had an answer. He kinda had that, that understanding of what was going on, he kind of already discussed it. So I had reached out to Arthur, I let him know that I'm going to meet with him at least once between our meetings to kinda go over the agenda, you know, what's going on in town. Linda, as vice chair, will also try to meet him on the alternate week, something we're probably going to start once he comes back from vacation, so we're not jimming with that. Kinda leads me to my follow-up, if you guys have any questions and I think, just, you know, send them to me, send them to Linda, so like, we can ask, we can communicate it. The other thing, again, and that's exactly, exactly, Jeff, the streamlined communication, just as a reminder to all the department heads, report to Arthur. So any communication we're doing with them and asking for them, we should be going through him. I think I saw a lot of emails this weekend, which is great that it was like addressed to him and they could be CC'd or he's trying to get that information. And I think that will be very helpful with getting, not seeing two, three, four different lines of communication, who's coming from. You know, I just wanna be leery of, you know, me going to somebody directly and asking them as a department head and then maybe them feeling like, if I'm gonna ask Patty questions and then, you know, like, well, that's a question Arthur should be asking me, you know, or keeping them in the loop. And I think that will be something to just kind of communicate. And I think that will help keep things out. And I know Arthur is very good at replying and all when we get things. And then, and then too, a lot of that reason for that too is, I know sometimes we ask questions here that we know the answers to or we want on the record, and Arthur's very good at answering them to email to us, but we never really cycle back the next meeting and say, hey, last meeting we asked this question and this was the answer. So I think me or Linda meeting ahead of time and kind of asking those questions, so when we ask it in a meeting, it's now public record, it's out there and it will help our transparency with the town. I hope that'll help.
Yeah.
Good to hear.
Anybody else? Questions, concerns, does that sound okay to everybody? I don't wanna be like, hey, this is what I wanna do.
Oh, it sounds good. Do we know what the mill rate is yet?
We do not. To my knowledge, we do not, but I will ask that question. I have not heard that we have it, but I'll ask it.
Okay.
All right, so executive session.
Go ahead. Do you wanna talk about the transfer station?
Oh, yeah, other business.
Were we going to do that or are we just gonna push that off till next meeting?
I thought that was gonna.
I thought we were gonna move it to next meeting.
Oh, so we're, okay.
Okay.
Because he doesn't have total numbers yet, so.
Yep, nope, you're right.
So potentially, we know we might have to look at transfer station being overspent.
Right, and then moving it from one.
But we just don't know how much.
Correct. So I think before we really discuss it, I think have any information to make it.
Okay.
So we will be having an executive session. We will not be making a decision in executive session, I believe. I think if there's any decisions, we'll add that to next meeting's agenda.
Correct.
And I'll get time it. So I will make a motion to enter executive session under Title I, subsection 405, section 6A, for the discussion of personnel.
I'll second the motion.
Enter that.
Yes, all those in favor? Okay.
Cool.
Thank you.
Oh, we're waiting for.